October 27, 2025 at 7:30 PM. And I would like to call to order the meeting of the Lisle Community Unit School District 202 Board of Education. Before we begin, Mrs. Sims will not be here this evening, so I make a motion to appoint Greg Nagler as Secretary Pro Tem.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nagler. And if you could please take a roll call.
Ms. Novosel.
Present.
Mr. Nagler is present. Mr. Helderly.
Present.
Ms. Foster.
Present.
Ms. D. Domenico.
Present.
And Ms. Allman.
Present, thank you.
Butting that Ms. Sims is absent.
Thank you. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a reading of our mission statement. And the Lisle 202 mission statement is to provide our learning community with the essential education, skills, and experiences for future success. So keep those thoughts in mind as we meet this evening. Next on our agenda is our item four is our student recognition. So I will turn that over to Mr. Maltoff.
Do I need these or can I just? I can just talk loud. Is that better? Okay.
Or use two mics?
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. For the whole world to hear, fair enough. Good evening. It is my distinct honor and privilege to recognize a tremendous academic accomplishment from one of our exceptional seniors, Reagan Grau, who this evening is here to be recognized for her performance on the National Merit PSAT NMSQT, the National Merit Qualifying Test. Each year, over 1.3 million really motivated and driven juniors take this test. And I say motivated and driven because it's optional, like they choose to sit and for hours and take this test. And Reagan did fantastic. We, like I said, we have 1.3 million. And because of her remarkable performance, we are thrilled to announce that Reagan has been named a commended scholar by the National Merit Foundation. What that means is that she scored in the top 50,000 of the testers in the nation. Think of it in a different way, say the top 50,000, think of it as the top 3.5% of the kids that took the test. That's where she sits, right? So it's a very commendable and honorable thing. We are super thrilled to have her. She represents all that is great of Lisle and the academic excellence that we want all of our kids to achieve. And we are super happy to recognize her this evening. Congratulations. Thank you.
Reagan, I'd like to just add our congratulations from the board. And I don't, I don't know if you remember a few years back when you went down to Springfield with Mrs. Jaikle's class and you came back and presented. You were the spokesperson that was chosen to present to the Lisle Education Foundation because the foundation had funded it. And when you presented, I knew that we would hear from you again, that great things would happen. So we wish you much success the rest of this year and certainly into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always fun to start off with something like that. We did, yes. Next is a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to give a public comment? Okay. If not, was there anything online for a public comment?
There were not.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our action items then. Does anyone before a start have any action items they would like pulled for discussion? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve item 6A consent agenda, 6A1, board meeting minutes, 6A2 payroll pay orders, 6A3 vendor pay orders, 6A4 personnel, 6A4A classified employment, 6A4B classified retirement, 6A4C extra duty employment, 6A4D extra duty resignation, and 6A5 appointment of delegate to the 2025 Illinois Association of School Boards Assembly and direction to vote in support of or against ISB resolutions in the constitutional amendment at the 2025 ISB Assembly. And I think we, there is a suggestion motion in there and there was no other discussion on the, or do you want some discussion on those topics, Dan?
There were a couple for discussion.
Okay, then you want that pulled out of here?
Yes.
Okay, we could prob, likely, well, no, let's, let's pull that for separate vote then now it's a lengthy motion, but we'll do that. So entertain a motion for, you know what, let's, let's have that discussion first and then we can just vote on it since it's a long, it's a long agenda.
It should be pretty straightforward. So I think here is if we're starting with the, we're just going to go down the list. I think most of them, everyone had gotten feedback and was to adopt. I think Ms. Foster, you wanted to look at a discussion for the Article Two, Section Six.
Yeah, Dan, thank you. Just a question, a section six, it refers to vendors. Just wondering, has that traditionally been in there, the background on that, just with the rest of the people in that group? Vendor seems an atypical fit.
I'm not sure, but they were just, they were striking language, so I suspect it's been there already.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the background on it from, I didn't see the question or we could have maybe checked on it, but.
Just, it was just kind of, the section is based off vendor, so like someone who sells things to the district would be in that same group with the teachers, the former teachers.
I guess, Dan, you could send an email in and ask for clarification if necessary if you want to pull up the, you want discussion on that particular, you want us to pull it up?
We can pull, let's pull it up if we can. It says, "Section Six Service Associate Member," correct?
Yeah.
It says, yeah, it reads, "Any person, firm, or corporation which provides services or products to school districts may be eligible to be a service associate member, provided, however, the Board of Directors. Service associate members may name one member as a special director to the board who shall be without a vote."
And you're on page?
It's page seven. Nope, wait, hold on.
Yeah, page seven.
And then I just thought when I read through it, it just seemed, just seemed atypical that a vendor who sells things, I just, the influence that they may have. I just wasn't sure if there was like a conflict of interest with people actively on the school board, people affiliated, like everything else seemed like it made sense, past members, people who are all kind of in that same realm of elected officials representing communities for school districts, and then there's vendors. It just, maybe some more background on it. It just, did anyone else, does that strike them as just unusual?
I didn't read that much into that. I was looking at they made some verbiage changes here to reduce duplicity, but I think if we wanted to get more details from them on that kind of specifics, we can reach out to them.
I mean, the verbiage was fine, but I just, when I was reading through that section, I just, it just seemed unusual that everybody else, it seemed to be representing that group. And I just, do they have different interests because their goal is to sell to them?
It does. It appears there without vote. If you could look at the, the dark type at the end of the first paragraph.
I did see that they don't get a vote.
Right.
But just they're involved in the group and the discussions, just would their perspective be different than people who are trying to represent and do the best for the communities and the schools and the communities because their goal is to sell?
The way I read it is the Board of Directors, they approve who can be service associate members, which obviously then they can use for, as vendors to say, "I'm an approved associate member." It doesn't go into how, you know, any other specifications, whether they can even be in that, you know what I mean? Like, which does not address at all in this language.
Yeah.
It's just, they reduced redundant language, you know. I think that was the, the main part, if you look at all the red lines. But the process itself, they don't go in.
Yeah. Like I said, the verbiage was fine. I just, when I read that section, it just struck me as unusual that.
I wonder if they're there for input. I don't know the background on those groups, but it does say in number two, or number three, where is it? That they're not an active member. So I wonder if it's, it's more for input from them on that. You know, we, you know, we could certainly, Dan, if you want to write up something, I'll send it into ISB and we can get clarification on it.
Yeah, maybe just some history. Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I don't know, it would be good to know their thinking on that, but my, my read is that they're just there for, for input and not a decision maker, so.
I just didn't read that as new. I just, like, from my understanding of what I read, in Article Two, Section One, they're just defining the classes of membership, and that's one of their classes of membership. I didn't read that part as a new addition to, to this.
Yeah, I agree. They were like, the language was changed, but I guess, I mean, maybe it's to bring to them in the future. I'm just questioning why it's there to begin with.
I think it's a good question, be interesting here.
Yeah, we can.
And they're not active members, as it says in number two in that section, but you know, it's, it's strange titles actually that the different ones have. So I guess the question is, what is the purpose of the service or what, what is the responsibility of the service associate member?
Yeah, what's their, their role?
Okay.
Okay.
We can get clarification, but it, it isn't, I mean, it was there before, so I think that's.
Is that from, are we all good to adopt?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, great. On the next one, Article Three, Section Two, Pam wanted a board discussion whether we should ask them to add a date for rationale for when the surveys will be sent and when the results of the surveys will be reported, which is the, nothing in the, in the language will say any sort of timing or commitment to it, saying that they just plan to. And this is also, in summary, is there are districts that for either logistical or financial reasons can't make it to Chicago for the, the, the conference. You know, think about somebody from far down south, you know, at Metropolis, Illinois, it's harder to get up here. So they were having discussions on whether they would allow voting by email. But then if you read language, well, people can vote by email, who's going to come downtown Chicago for two days? You know, so they're looking at the impact on the, the conference itself as well. So now Pam, if you want to elaborate on your.
The section just said that there would be a study, that they'd do a study in 2024. It's kind of like a dangling participle. It didn't say anything about what they were going to do with the study or whatever. So if we're writing in on the other, why don't we add to that? When will the results of the study be shared and, you know, for further discussions? So I think that would, as long as we're writing in, we can ask it.
Yeah, it was interesting. I think they mentioned 2024 as using, they were going to do a survey of who attended the conference and who attended just the delegate.
In 2024, yeah.
From last year.
But, yeah, so there's never.
By the time they get around to this, they'll have all the information for 2025, I would think, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
We can ask them.
It's that dangling issue.
Yeah, so in general, do we wish to adopt that language?
Yes.
Okay. Great. We got the next three, Article Four, Section One, Article Four, Section Two, Article Five, Section Two. I think I'm responsible to adopt in all three of those. Are there any additional discussions? Okay, great. Moving on to Article Seven, Section Three, Pam was wondering that there seemed to be some language, funky language in there about the members of in the third line to be deleted. Now Pam, my thoughts were I think active members is capitalized in a specific group, so.
Do you want to tell them what page that's on so we can?
Yeah.
Is it Article Three? I didn't.
Article Seven, Section Three. So that's the, yeah, page nine, and you'll see in there, "A nominating committee consisting of a chair who shall be the immediate past president and the four additional persons who are members of the active members." Does that, "Members of active members and serve on the Board of Directors shall be appointed by the President, et cetera." And I think, I think it's the members of active members that, having members mentioned twice was.
Who are active members with the, it, it, it's not a big deal, but it, it just seemed like it was repeating, members of active members seemed odd.
Yeah, so if you search the document, you'll find the words "active members" repeated multiple times. So I think it's just a name of a group that happens to have the word "members" in it.
Sure, no, it's, it's a title of a group, active members, just like the, the one we just talked about, but it just, it's, it's fine. We can just leave it like that.
All right. With that, any, do we recommend to adopt? Okay. And then for the remaining one, Article Eight, Section Four, Article Nine, Sections Two through Seven, Article Eleven, Section Seven, and Article Twelve, Section Two. I think I got responses to do adopt from everybody. So any discussions on those? Okay. And now to the resolution, those were amendments to the Constitution. This, these are just resolutions, which are major proposals that ISB will bring to the state legislature later. The school bus safety funding, and I got everyone responses to do adopt. So any discussion? All right, I will work on, Pam and I work on email to ISAB on those questions, and I will vote in accordance with our decisions tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only reason we added it was based on the ISB recommendation in those, in the packet at the end, they said, suggested having a backup there. There was one time that I remember when Mrs. McConville was a delegate and couldn't go, and so I did fill in, but it really should be formally approved by the board first, so, just a formality, so. Thank you, Dan. And with that, I will entertain the motion and the consent agenda as presented. If someone could make a mo, or.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
So that's a first and second by Ms. D. Domenico and Ms. Foster?
Yes, and then if we could have a roll call.
Yes. Ms. Allman.
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico.
Oh, wait. We want to start with Ms. Domenico.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Allman.
Aye.
Mr. Helderly.
Aye.
Mr. Nagler is an aye, and Ms. Novosel.
Aye.
And Ms. Sims is not present. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, or seven on the agenda is our financial information. The Board acknowledges receipt of the following reports, Financial Report, 7B Treasury Report, and 7C Investment Concentration and Collateral Report, September 30, 2025. Any discussion on those reports? Okay, and that brings us to our next item, which is item eight, discussion items, and the school improvement plan. And I think we're, as we shift over to our administrative staff to, from Lisle Elementary, I just want to acknowledge that last Friday was Principal's Day in Illinois. And I guess in 1990, the Illinois governor decided, or endorsed that day, October 24, to acknowledge the importance of principals, assistant principals, and deans in Illinois. And not to be outdone, there is also a national principals' day, which is celebrated May 1st, so you get to, but this one includes the whole group, and you're here tonight, and, and we also want to honor your dedication and leadership, not only your team, principal and all the associates, but also your colleagues at the junior high and the senior highs. So with that, we celebrate that and now invite you to have your, the school improvement plan, so welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Education and District Leadership. We are honored to be here to present our Lisle Elementary School School Improvement Plan for the 2025-2026 school year. I'd like to introduce our administrative team. We have Mrs. Meredith McCormick, our Assistant Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. We have our new Assistant Principal of Student Services, Mrs. Krista Swike, and then our Dean of Students, Ms. Kristen Petrella. We're very honored to be here, and I'm sincerely pleased with being able to present this presentation and honored to be representing the staff and students. We have amazing staff and outstanding students, and we look forward to sharing with you our improvement over the last year. We also would like to just indicate that our school improvement plan, the entire plan is at the end of our presentation tonight, so that's also for you to review with us. And we look forward to, starting off with, how do we learn and grow at Lisle Elementary School? And we go through, sorry, I have to get, we're, we go through, are our students ready socially, emotionally? And we know that then we go into our academic progress, and then also our instructional practices, our assessment results, and then we also will end with our action plan tonight. And so we look forward to hearing about how our students, we know that they need to be socially, emotionally ready to learn, and so we're going to have Ms. Petrella talk a little bit about what we do at Lisle Elementary School.
When we're looking at our social, emotional learning, we're really looking at the foundational skills that each and every student needs every single day. Students need to be ready to learn to actually access the academics, the math, the reading, all of those important things. We know many students are coming to us with a lot of background, a lot of things in their weekend and in their mornings that we can't foresee, nor can we actually see, but we do have to account for those things. At Lisle Elementary School, we put a lot of work into ensuring that our students are supported and to help them build these social, social and emotional skills. We do have an increased number of students arriving dysregulated on the daily. They're students that we're spending time coaching, coaching on school skills for coping skills, coaching on dysregulation skills, and coaching on the basic problem solving skills, how to solve a friendship conflict, how to handle the word "no" or a direction that might not be what you want to hear. At the building, we have two things we use to teach our building-wide expectations. The first is our being safe, being respectful, and being responsible. And then we also have our second step curriculum. Those are both things all of our students access on the daily. The students hear those three terms, respectful, responsible, and safe in all areas of the building, the playground, the lunchroom, their classrooms, the bathroom, the bus, so that everybody in the building is familiar with what's expected of them. It's equally as important to recognize the students who are doing the right thing. I know there was a question about Aurora tickets. That was started last October by a committee that was put into place to help recognize those students, that positive behavior that we are seeing in the majority of students. So when somebody is seen doing the right thing, going above and beyond, they get Aurora ticket, and then on Thursday, Aurora tickets are pulled, and those students are recognized at the building level, and they're given a certificate to acknowledge and recognize that we see you doing the right thing, and we do really appreciate that. We also provide our students with the opportunity to grow their leadership skills. Last year, we spoke about the Ally Club that has evolved into the Lions Leadership Club to kind of better suit our school and our building and everything we're working on. Last year, we were lucky enough to have about 24 fifth graders. This year, we've already gotten started, and we're lucky enough to have 33 fifth graders as a part of this. They go through an application process, their teachers provide feedback, and it's a really phenomenal opportunity for these fifth graders to step into a leadership role, maybe try something new, see themselves in a different light. During this, it's a unique opportunity. They learn leadership skills, and then they also, last year, had the opportunity to mentor kindergarten, first, and second grade students. They mentored these students on friendship skills. We talked about what's a rose friend and what's a thorn friend. We talked about how to solve conflicts. If something, somebody takes your toy at recess, what's the appropriate thing to do? And coming from a peer, those younger students really looked up to these students as role models. This year, we're looking to expand it even further, and we're going to do some community service by going to Feed My Starving Children to volunteer, and we're also looking to give back to the school in some capacity. One of the unique opportunities is it actually gives these students a voice in coming up with what do you want to do? It's not directed by me telling them directly, here's what we're going to do. It gives them that opportunity to, to come up with a plan and then see it through. We also have our student council for students in third through fifth grade. These are students that are chosen as representatives by their classmates, and they do things in our building like Plan Our Spirit Days, our Can Food Drive, the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So it's another opportunity for all of these students who we know are doing the right thing and have this phenomenal potential to grow that at the elementary level. We're excited for these opportunities, and we're excited to see how we can take these students even further in their leadership into the future.
Thank you, Kristen. Once we assure that our students are socially, emotionally ready, that we know that they're ready to learn, and so Mrs. McCormick will be detailing our, how our students learn through instructional practices, our curriculum, and assessments in the upcoming slides. So we continue to use different assessments to measure our student performance and growth throughout the year. So we have our classroom assessments from our core curriculum, such as our Bridges Math, our My View, our Magnetic Reading. We also use iReady and FastBridge across K5, and we call this our universal screening data. And we use this information to help us determine who are those students that might need additional supports or intervention. And then we, of course, have our, one time a year, we have our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or IR. That assessment is in the spring. That is a one-time data point for our students. So if you recall from last year, I shared with you this framework, and this framework depicts our different levels of instruction that we have. So we want to make sure that our curriculum is meeting the needs of the majority of our students, and so we roughly always want to make sure that that's about 80%. But we also know that some students are going to need more support, more intervention. And so we look at who are those students that are going to need Tier Two supports, reading and math intervention? And then we also know that we're going to have kids that need additional support in Tier Three. So those are very intensive services, not just academically, but also social and emotional. So we use this framework in a system called MTSS. And our MTSS occurs three times a year. And it's in this space that we talk about social, emotional learning needs and the academic needs of our students. And it's really a great time for grade-level teams to come together to set goals, to celebrate, and to identify what are those opportunities for growth within the instructional year? So what do we know about those students that are sitting in front of us? And what are those next steps that we need to plan for their instruction? As well as determine what are those small groups? What is it that we know that they're going to need additional reteaching in? But what might they also need some additional enrichment opportunities in? So it's really a great opportunity for us to review and look at just that overall health of our school and then the overall health of our grade levels. So with that, we were, we had a lot to celebrate when we looked at our spring MTSS data. So you can see here that, like I mentioned, we really want that at least 80% of our students, you know, at or above grade level, which we were able to last spring celebrate. So this gave us a lot to, to think about, to reflect on. We were able to celebrate the instructional practices and opportunities that we were providing for students. We were able to celebrate the fluency work that we were doing in reading. We were able to celebrate the magnetic reading and, and just the different routines that, that teachers were engaged in daily with their students, as well as look at how our reteaching and our intervention had helped our students. And then the same goes for math. So again, we were looking to see how many of those kids at the end of the year were at 80% or above, meeting the, the grade level needs. You can see, like in grade one and grade two, you know, we took a little bit of a dip. And we also reflect on what are some of those dips? So what are those little tweaks that we need to make to our curriculum? What are those things that we need to add? And what are those areas in? So we might identify, you know, problems. So, we might identify, you know, problem solving or, you know, measurement and data or fractions. And so, we're able to kind of zero in and then make some of those tweaks for this year. And you'll hear some of those tweaks when we talk about our areas of focus. You're here where some of those tweaks come to play. Last spring, we shared, Dr. Schreiber, shared with the Vision 202 group that we had our What I Need time every single day. We really love this time. One of the unique things about What I Need time, it occurs every single day. It also occurs outside of our core curriculum. So, one of the things that's very important to us is that all students have access to grade-level instruction. We want them to be working in grade-level texts. We want them to be working on grade-level math concepts. But we also recognize, like I mentioned, through our MTSS system, we know that they need opportunities for reteaching. We know they need opportunities for enrichment. So, we provide that through a 30-minute time that happens outside of that core time. So, during that core time, you might see students leaving and going to intervention with a reading specialist or a math specialist. You might also, at that time, see someone leaving to go with our AL teacher to do a little bit of an enrichment group. You might also see someone receiving a special education intensive service at that time. So, it's our top priority that our entire team, our teachers, staff, and administration are meeting the students where they are, whether it's socially or academically. And so, Mrs. Swike will share the specific supports offered through Student Services Department and especially with our students with special needs.
Thank you, Dr. Schreiber. So, I'm going to cover what we encompass in our umbrella of student services. So, that would include our EL bilingual programming. That would include our Section 504 plans, our at-risk and self-contained preschool, as well as special education. Our special education department would encompass our special education teachers, all of our related service providers, so our social workers, our speech-language pathologists, our school psychologists. And another big piece of that is our partnership that we have with our special ed cooperative SAS Ed. So, that entity, they employ our OTs and our PTs, so our occupational therapists, our physical therapists. And they also offer a lot of resources and supports to our school as well. Most recently, on October 3rd, we were able to offer a resource to our paraprofessionals across the entire district and they received a training about dysregulation in our students and how to manage that and how to be trained in dealing with that. So, they really do provide that big partnership that we are grateful for. And then, we continue to just look at our programming, look at the supports that we have and how they meet our students' needs and how we need them to evolve as our students' needs evolve. So, the biggest portion of our Student Services Department is special education services. So, those are students that have been identified through an evaluation process for and that have been identified as needing an individualized education plan or an IEP. So, these students, through that eligibility, are receiving direct instruction in their needs. And if you look at this graph, it shows the numbers that we have over the past two school years and then this school year. And if you look a little bit deeper at that, the 21 students there for this school year are our speech-only IEPs. These are students that have been identified with a speech-language impairment. They get direct instruction from a speech-language pathologist. Their goals and objectives relate to that speech and language impairment and their accommodations relate to that as well. The 79 students that we have identified as needing an academic behavioral functional IEP are getting direct instruction in academics, so reading, writing, and math, that have been identified through that evaluation process. And then, that behavioral functional support might come in connection with that. We are seeing an increase in the need with our students' behavioral and functional needs. So, that is something that the IEP is expanding a little bit more, a little more intense than we may be seeing in the past. And then additionally, those students may receive a related service connected to their IEP for speech-language, social-emotional learning from a social worker or occupational and physical therapy. So, the thing to note with this is currently, at this given moment, we have 100 students in the school with IEPs. But that number is always evolving. That number actually changed even as early as most recent as last week. So, we have students that were identified and evaluated and were eligible for an IEP. So, we are constantly looking at that number. The numbers from the past two school years should be noted that those are December 1st counts. That's when the state expects us to report out on that. So, these numbers, we know that our numbers currently will continue to evolve, will continue to grow as our student needs grow. So, we anticipate that number will meet or exceed the previous two school years' numbers. As you know, as a board, you guys have been so gracious in to understand when we have our needs and to approve different programming needs that we had. Our preschool programming was one of those. We identified that that self-contained classroom would greatly benefit a group of students. And what's great about that is those students can be in our schools, being serviced, and then go right to kindergarten again in our school. Additionally, we have our 3rd through 5th grade self-contained ELA math classroom. These are students that have been identified as needing extra supports in the area of ELA and math that are beyond just being pulled out for a certain amount of minutes or pushed in for a certain amount of minutes with support, that they need the entirety of that class period in a specialized education classroom. Again, due to that increasing behavioral functional support needs or for an academic need. So, again, we continue to look at our programming. We continue to look at our needs of our students and look at ways to continue to build our programming to meet those needs so that they can continue to transition onto the junior high and high school through the elementary, I'm sorry, through the Lyle School District.
You know, I, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I had just asked the question and it's probably more for the board, but just so that we're not deceived by this, that looks like, oh, all the services are going down because it is as of December 1st and maybe we could get an update
Absolutely.
in December or January on those numbers so that we would have an accurate reflection if everybody would like that.
Yeah, Pam, I would agree. I did notice that 23, 24 to 24, 25 went down. So, yeah, it'd be interesting to see maybe in January, would that be enough time?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
So, just curious on the numbers that are trending down. But is this due to more students transitioning in and out of the district or because of your services, students saying, I no longer need speech therapy, I no longer need IEP, I'm caught up, I've got skills now? I'm just curious how the numbers like this look, you know?
So, a couple of different things. One thing I think that we should be very proud of is our MTSS process. It's very extensive and we can really analyze and make sure that we're working through those interventions which may prevent even the need for moving into a case study, moving into an evaluation. So, obviously, I'm new here, but that was one of the most impressive things that I've seen in Lyle School District is how strong our MTSS process is, how thorough we are about making sure that we've exhausted our intervention process before considering moving forward with an evaluation. So, I do think that's one component. Since actually September 1st, we've had 15 students move into Lyle Elementary and a handful of those have been IEPs. So, that number was actually smaller than 100. So, it just really, I think, fluctuates. I think the large group of students moving on to the junior high that were 5th graders that had IEPs. And then, obviously, you're going to have a larger section of numbers at the older grades because they're coming into as early learners and then we're identifying, oh, they may be falling farther behind and then going through that evaluation process.
There's some feedback from the junior high with the MTSS. I'd never heard about MTSS until a couple of years ago when you guys started introducing it. And I think the feedback I'm hearing at the junior high, this is really helping our kids
Absolutely.
academically. And it's, I think, reflecting in your numbers that you'll be coming up in later slides.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. The next area that we'll discuss is our social emotional support. So, as I mentioned, we are seeing an increase of support needed to support our students' behaviorally, functionally. They're coming in with, on a daily, of things that we are not fully aware of, but we are needing to support them to support those social emotional needs and then to be able to then support their academic needs. So, this graph depicts how much support that students in our building may be receiving through either our MTSS process or through direct services from an IEP or a 504 plan. So, indirect services may look like teacher collaboration. It may be mentoring students that need some extra support. It may be delivering an SEL lesson in our classrooms. Problem solving may be something that's been identified, whereas direct services will be more of those individual and group sessions, direct minutes that you would find in an IEP that's been identified as a related service. The numbers here, if you notice the 70, that number was last year. At this time, the students that were receiving direct services through an IEP or 504. And that number actually has jumped to 88 this year. So, again, that functional behavioral, those needs, we are recognizing that in our students that they're needing more of those supports. Again, that extensive MTSS process that we should be so proud of, that 158 students. So, those are students that throughout the year last year, at fall, winter, and spring, we identified as needing some Tier 2 supports. So, again, those more likely will be more indirect supports, but they look very different depending on what child that you're discussing, right? And what needs that they had. But because we look at those three times a year and we utilize things like attendance records, tardy records, nurse visits, discipline referrals, that's how we identify which students may need some additional supports. Again, through more of an indirect of supporting that teacher, problem-solving meetings, or if they eventually move to an evaluation and are identified to need an IEP, then they would receive more direct services and direct goals related to their needs. Some things that these numbers don't include, that I think it's important to know that our social workers and our support, our social emotional personnel provide, is that if we do have crisis calls, they are one of those team members that are called to support. And those are not numbers we analyze on a daily as to how much support is required for our students. So, this may be extreme anxiety. This may be students that have school refusal concerns, that are having a difficult time coming in the building. This may be students that elope from the classroom or from even the building. So, those are requiring the team of our special education staff, our administration staff, and our social workers to respond and to care for those students. Additionally, our nature is to take care of students when they need assistance. And so, if families reach out to us and tell us of situations their family is going through, that's another support that that social worker is going to provide them with. So, illness or death in a family, divorce or separation. So, those things do come up and those will definitely fluctuate how much support is needed for our student body.
About how many crisis calls would you say in a week?
Um...
Just a rough...
Yeah, that's a great question.
For example, today, between the hours of 12:30 and 2:30, we had four going on at the same time.
Significant.
That's what I was afraid of, but I mean, that's what I thought. And that's probably a couple of times a week that it's those numbers?
At least.
At least.
Yeah.
Building on Pam's question, do you guys feel that you have the right amount of social services support in the building to support the kids during those? I know those are intense.
I think that's, oh, go ahead.
I think that's a great question. One of the things that Kristen and Krista have been working on is really finding the resources that we can tap into in DuPage County. And one of the resources that just opened up in Wheaton is the Crisis Response. And we have really focused on that with some of our families that not necessarily are going to go out and get that health professional help outside of the school. And so, I don't know if Kristen, you want to share a little bit more of you went to the actual...
Yeah, so, I was able to go visit it with a team of professionals from all of the Lyle Schools. It's a phenomenal resource. They have a mobile unit that we can call out directly to the school. It's also, a parent can take a child there at any point. It's a 2359 facility, so they're able to keep parents and families for a longer term during the day. They're able to connect them directly with what more that may be. And those wraparound services, sometimes that turns into that family support, sometimes it turns into more direct support for the students. So, that's been a really phenomenal resource for us to call directly or for us to just provide the parents with when they reach out that they're struggling. It's that follow-up sometimes that we're then having to kind of help with is, hey, have we called? Hey, did you follow up with that phone call? We can only open the door for it, so we're seeing some of that. But that's a phenomenal resource we've been able to access that just opened, I think it was like a month and a half ago, actually. It's right in Wheaton by like the courthouse and stuff there. So, that's one of our great resources in the county.
It's so beautiful. It's a beautiful facility, but we're sending, connecting people with that resource.
I know, I heard the fire department also uses the mobile unit frequently, but when you have a crisis call like that, how many staff are involved?
We try to make it minimally first, right? And then, depending on the situation, we all have radios and so, we know students very well. We kind of know what that's going to look like. And so, that we know that certain language we use on the radio, so we know who to call for and how many to call for. But on any given situation, it could be as many as four or five staff members.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say this, should you come to capacity and you need more, working with Dr. Philippiac, you know, let's figure something out. I think the sooner we address this situation with the students, the better they are all around, you know, socially, emotionally.
We have to remember Dave Wilkinson's presentation on budget
Yes.
when we're making those commitments.
Yes.
And then, the last area that our department covers is EL and bilingual services. Again, this is a number that looks like it's dipping a little bit, but even in recent weeks, we've had students that moved in with EL services as well. So, that number actually continues to grow. And when this presentation was made, we had the 45 students, but this number actually is a few more, I know for certain, because since the presentation was put together, we have had some more students move in. So, we do account for 18 different languages, which was an increase from last year. Last year, we had 14. And this year, we added Russian, Urdu, Marathi, and Burmese. So, those were four languages that were added as native languages with our students, which is something to celebrate, that we have a very diverse population. 43 of those students of the 45 are Spanish-speaking students. I think it was noted that it may have been a little bit dipped. And I think when looking numbers to numbers, it was actually one student by one student. So, I think by adding those extra languages to, that changed that percentage. 42% of them are receiving intensive language support, so that is two sessions, 30 minutes apiece per day to support that language. So, that is a 56% increase in our EL population and I think just more recent students that have moved into the United States so that we can help them access their curriculum by getting that EL instruction. We do offer two models, so students can receive bilingual services, so they get instruction in English and in their native language, or they are an English learner where it's just completely in English and then they have some extra supports that are interventions that are in English as well. And then, again, the model can be either a push-in model or a pull-out model. And then, those more intense language support services would be more of that pull-out model. But again, this number is always evolving and we're always looking to identify if we have supports in place for these students as well.
Can you use Google Translate with the parents and the families? I mean, do some of the children come in only in their language?
Yes.
And then...
As early as this week, actually. That happened. We actually have a device called a Pocket Talk, which is a great tool for teachers to be able to utilize with their students and the EL and bilingual staff is able to use. And then, we've utilized Google Translate as well and just always looking for, yeah, there's even phone systems that I know I've heard of
Sure.
that you can utilize for that too. So, always looking at those supports as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will now transition into our assessment results from the previous school year. We have valuable data to highlight, but we also have areas that we continue to focus on. And as you can share, our MTSS process has definitely helped and supported every student in our building and we...
in our building, and we look forward to sharing our I-Ready, which Mrs. McCormick will share, and then I will share our preliminary Illinois Assessment of Readiness assessment data tonight.
So our I-Ready assessment is a growth measure. And just a little recap, if you remember, the I-Ready will set in the fall a typical growth goal for all of our students. So this is a very attainable goal, so we want to make sure that students are progressing and meeting that typical growth goal. So last year, so fall to spring, 65% of our students achieved their expected growth in reading, and 62% of our students achieved their expected growth in math. So we were very excited about that. Again, we want to make sure all students are learning. So this means that you might be moving from, you know, two grade levels below to one grade level below, or, you know, mid to above. And so we want to make sure all students are learning. We also were very, very excited because this fall, when we looked at our MTSS data, when we looked at our overall I-Ready and our Fast Bridge data, we had 83% of those students who were ready for grade level standards in, we have never had it that high. We were so excited. So, so what does that tell us? And that really lets us know that we do not need to spend time reteaching and going back and reviewing previous grade level. So we want to accelerate student learning, we don't want to remediate student learning. And that's how we make sure all students are growing. We, as Krista just mentioned, we have a lot of new students moving in with EL. So that means we have to get them to grow, and they need that grade level instruction. If you're already in third grade, you're already in fourth grade, you cannot spend a lot of time in first and second grade. You need to be able to accelerate and, and we need to close that gap. So these numbers were just so promising for us and just really validated our MTSS process as well, so.
Kudos. I mean, those are fantastic results.
Yes. And again, that doesn't mean that we don't have opportunities for growth. There are a lot of things we want to strengthen. Again, our grade level teams set some excellent goals. They work collaboratively, collaboratively together to make sure that all of the students are growing and, and they meet those goals. So again, we'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about our, our next steps for this year.
It's a celebration.
Yeah.
Our students are performing very well on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and we are looking to share with you that tonight, our ELA, and then our math, and then our overall performance. And so one thing that we definitely want to make sure, it is preliminary data, even though we did receive our official documentation today, it will be published by the end of the week for Lyle Elementary School. And we're going to start out with our English Language Arts. And again, this assessment, as Meredith has shared, is a one-time snapshot of our students in the spring of each year. So this data is from our students that were in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And when you look at this specific slide, we are showing you where our students were currently, that our fourth-grade students, our current fifth-grade students, and then the current sixth-grade students. And so we definitely are very excited to see that our growth is going from 63% in third grade to 68% in fourth grade, and then to 70% in fifth grade. We have designated the dotted line shares where the previous scores would have been. The state did change some of those parameters, but again, this is, what the state is saying to us is that students that are in the meet and exceed proficiency level are showing that they are career and college-ready. And so we want to make sure that we continue to see that growth. I think the, the biggest thing is making sure that we know our ELA program, or my view, we're in year four. We're seeing those improvements, we're seeing the significant conversations and discussions within our reading program through second through fifth. We've also implemented this year our magnetic reading, which we talked about last year when we talked about we're seeing those dips in second grade, why? And we decided to move that magnetic reading that we already have in kindergarten and first grade into second grade for those foundational skills. So we're very proud to say that our preliminary data for our ELA is extremely high, and we need to continue to keep making sure our staff is working on those instructional practices and also diving deeper into our curriculum. Next, you will, on the next slide is our math by grade level. And again, similar to our ELA, we have our current fourth grade, current fifth grade, and then current sixth grade. I think this is, again, showing that we have students that are meeting and exceeding at proficiency, proficiency level by cohort. We are seeing that our third graders that are currently our fourth grade were at 65% in math. And then I think we're very proud of our current fifth-grade students, right? They, they started at 62%, and now they're at 67%. And then we also, you know, we know our current sixth-grade students, we know them very well, we know what type of learners they are, and to see that they went from 46 to 42 and then to 55. Last year, we talked a lot about what we're seeing in that fourth-grade math, and really we, we are looking now and saying, okay, well, we're definitely seeing these students that are bouncing back once they get into fifth grade and what they are learning, but what are some of those strategies that we know that we have to commit to? And one of the things that we talked about last year was that problem solving in math. And now we're looking across K through five. We had an amazing spring professional development where we did an articulation day, where all of our kindergarten and through fifth-grade teachers were designed, Meredith put them in groups, and they met with one representative from each grade level. They talked about, you know, what does our bridges look like? What are we doing in kindergarten that we just continue to build on getting to fifth grade? And it was just an amazing conversation. We just did that this past September with our ELA programming, and the discussions that we're having at the elementary level is by far unreal. Our teachers are dedicated to their students, they're dedicated to making sure students are achieving, and they're differentiating their instruction. I think the biggest thing is when we talk about, you know, some of the crises that we see on a daily basis, and what we're able to do amongst those crises is pretty phenomenal.
Going these numbers, you've got this fifth-grade class, that's 68% ELAs, 67% for math, and your current fourth graders. How are you going to get that to like 75? Like, you know, you jump there, and as you kind of get through those last students, I would imagine, it gets harder. And to reach those kids, get them to grade level, can you talk to like what you're doing to kind of keep this success?
I'm going to pass that to Meredith.
Okay.
Yes, so I'm just going to kind of restate what you were saying. So sometimes we do, we see that jump, we see IR success with our third graders, you know, they go on to that fourth grade. A lot of what happens in fourth grade from when we look at the standards and we kind of dig into that information, we see a lot with fractions, we see a lot with problem-solving. And so we really started to have our fourth grade look at a lot of the way that the questions are posed, right? How they're asked, what the students are expected to know and be able to do with that fourth-grade content. The other big shift is in fourth and fifth grade, the constructed response items. And again, I'm talking to, about IR. You know, on a, on a constructed response, they are expected to, you know, justify an answer, they have to explain, they have to model, they have to do a drawing, they have to, you know, obviously then solve the problem. And so we are also working across K-5 to build kind of a framework. It's a, just kind of a framework that would help, help students be able to solve and write a constructed response. And how can we start that in kindergarten and build all the way through fifth grade? And this was a really fun project because we did it over the summer, and I asked Vinnie from the middle school to come over. I think he referenced it in the presentation that junior high did as well. And he came over and we kind of worked together. So it was something that he's hoping that he can even take to the, to the junior high. So how do we get students to start thinking about not just solving the problem, but then how do we explain our thinking? How do we justify our answers? And so that is a whole piece to IAR that is just very unique and that's very different. So we're also, like I said, having to have our teachers incorporate and embed those opportunities into their bridges lessons as well. And so those are conversations that we're having in our articulation meetings.
Thank you.
Next, we will talk a little bit about our overall performance on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. And this again is showing our students that are meeting and exceeding proficiency. And again, the state's benchmark is they're ready for career and college readiness. And so we can see that our students are consistently improving. We have our ELA for our overall this year is at 67%, our math is at 63%. And then our science assessment is taken by our fifth-grade students, and that's taken also one time in the spring. It's over three days. And so one of the things that this state did is they realigned the science assessment to be in more comparison to our math and ELA. So that's where you'll see, I know that there was a question about our percentages looking a little differently than our last year presentation. Last year, we presented in September with our preliminary, but also some of the information that we pulled ourselves from our Illinois report card, when you get those preliminary in the summer. And so we know that there are a couple of the percentages have changed, similar to the science in 2024. It says that we were 81, but on our report card it says 79. So again, some of those percentages may change when you see our final report card this year. I think one of the great things is that we are seeing the improvement even with the comparison to previous IR data. And then today, we were designated as exemplary, which again is in the top 10%, and it's pretty amazing because of our staff and the commitment that they have for every student, including the administration team sitting here. I think it just goes to show what we can do to provide the best education for our students. And so we're very excited to celebrate this. Our staff will have a staff meeting on Wednesday, and we'll definitely celebrate with them on Wednesday.
Oh, kudos again. I mean, that's, that's wonderful. Great slide, too.
Thanks, Jenna Engler.
Yeah, I was going to ask if Jenna did that.
Of course she did.
A little bit of that touch in there. But even back to the prior one, the overall performance, and I know in the junior high presented, they also explained a lot of the changes in the science assessment. So those are significant positive results, so thank you.
Thanks. So next, our next survey assessment that we will discuss is our Five Essentials. And just as, you know, this is my fourth year of presenting our school improvement plan. And when we think about where we came from in 2022 till now, I sat here in 2022 my first time and explained to you that we were very weak in collaborative teachers and effective leadership, and that was red. And then our ambitious instruction involved families was neutral, and then our supportive environment was strong. And so we take that data, and I have to say, we were very surprised by the results. You've received the entire survey results, and we were surprised. I would be remiss if I didn't say I was disappointed due to the fact that the conversations that we're having about our data, the conversations that we're having about how to support students. So what we did is we got to work and we talked with staff, we went to our building leadership team to discuss, you know, why are our results not showing better than neutral? And we also talk about in 2023 to 2024, we were neutral and effective leaders, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, and then we were, our supportive environment and our involved families was strong. And so all five categories this year are neutral, and so what are we doing about that? We're going to talk a little bit about the positive outcomes that came from this. And one of the things is, you know, our program coherence, which is also part of our effective leaders. And, and we definitely are seeing that our programs, our curriculum, our instructional practices are making a difference, and that can go hand in hand with what we're seeing in our data and what we're talking about at MTSS. We know that our teachers trust one another, that they're willing to provide feedback or supports in any way, whether it's personally or professionally. And then we also see that our students have indicated that our English instruction is pretty strong, and it makes them critically think, and we give that opportunity for writing skills. Again, one of the things that we talked about last year and this year is, you know, providing those writing opportunities across all curriculums. And I know that, again, these are positive outcomes, but it's probably not what, where we would like to be. We'd like to see this in strong. And we're, again, working continuously. We've already had three meetings with our Five Essentials Committee. So we put out to everyone who would be interested in being part of that Five Essentials Committee, and we went through the entire survey and looked at areas where we can improve on, areas that we can impact. Many of the teachers were very surprised as well and disappointed. And one of the items that we're going to make sure that we have an action on is ensuring that all of our families, our students, and our staff understand what we provide at Lyle Elementary School. Some of the takeaways were, again, our parent survey shows that we have high-level satisfaction from our parents. They know that their children are coming to our school and getting the education that they deserve and, and need. And then our parents also feel that their voice is heard. I think we saw that in Vision 2002 in the spring. We had obviously a lot of parents come from Lyle Elementary School. We also had a lot of teachers come and discuss some of the things that we do amazing, and then some of the things that we need to focus on to improve. And then I think our biggest thing is making sure parents feel involved and part of our school when they come to our school, whether that's picking up for their child for an early dismissal, or if they are coming because their child's sick and they need to talk to the nurse. Again, feeling welcome. And we need those, those families part of our educational process, and we need to partner with them so that we can make sure that we support our child completely, socially, emotionally, and academically. So what are those opportunities that we need to grow on when we're discussing this with our dedicated Five Essentials Committee? I do want to share just a little bit about who's part of that Five Essentials Committee because it's very important that we have eight individuals. It's Meredith and myself as the administration team, and then we have Christy Climes, Jill Moreno, we have Trish Murphy, we have Lauren Clavelli, all individuals that have really been at Lyle Elementary School for a very long period of time. We also have Rachel Dawson, and we have our new Laura Block, she's a new third-grade teacher, and she has some experience in other districts. And we're looking at, you know, ways that we can really make sure that our Five Essentials is going in that strong direction and looking at collaborative teachers. What does that look like? And what are some strengths that we need to provide? One of the things that we talked about is, one of the aha moments was that individuals in our building don't understand our mentor program. We have a very significant mentor program for our new teachers, and there were 19 individuals that said we didn't have a mentor program. So that was kind of a surprise, and our teachers were also surprised because they put a lot of work into that mentor program to support teachers in their first and second year at Lyle Elementary School. Then, you know, our supportive environment, one of the things that the teachers shared in our meetings were, they don't want to add more to their plate, right? They already do everything that they need to, but what are some things that we can do to make sure everyone feels supported? We obviously have a significant amount of staff members that indicate that they believe they are supported by whether their colleagues, their leaders, or also the families. And so what can we do to make sure that that supportive environment encompasses all staff? And really, we're focusing on those groups. So as Krista talked about, those paraprofessionals, giving them some, you know, professional development. We meet with them once a month when preschool is not there on a Friday. We meet with all our paraprofessionals for a half an hour and discuss some of the maybe concerns they have, or some of the areas that they want to learn more about so that they can support our students. And then effective leaders, again, looking at, you know, what can we do as leader, as leadership? And one of the things is, you know, retaining leadership at Lyle Elementary School and making sure that we can move forward. Our Student Services Department is made up of 28 staff members, and again, they want to make sure that they have someone that they can go to on a regular basis. So again, having the conversations, we're not shy to those conversations, but we know we need to improve.
It's good to have the conversations, though. What, do you have any idea what percentage, say, of staff completed the Five Essentials survey?
I think we were at 75% for staff.
That's fairly high.
So it's pretty high.
Yeah. And with students, I know you said they, they feel strong English, did they have other comments that, or other areas that they felt could be built on?
I think that part of what our students, like, we definitely, they had 25 categories that they looked at, right? To get the, these scores of neutral. And one of the items that was, you know, supportive environment, peer support for academic work, and that was neutral. But, you know, how can we make sure that there is that collaboration, that communication during peer work, that they feel that they're being heard? And what is that, what's something that our teachers can actually improve on in how they're discussing or modeling when I'm working with a peer? And that goes to our zones of regulation and making sure our students understand how do we talk to, you know, our accountability, talk to another peer. And so those are some things that our peers, again, each year, we also look at our fourth and fifth-grade students and when they're taking the survey and how they're feeling, because sometimes it's obviously also how they are feeling, whether they're feeling good about their teacher, or whether they're feeling good about their math or their ELA and where they stand. And so really looking at our students and, and giving that the opportunity to improve on the areas that are looking like that peer relationship and also the teacher relationship.
I noticed you included some of that in your school improvement plan for the peer collab, or student collaborations, so hopefully that'll have an impact, too.
And we definitely need to enhance that in order for them to then move on to the junior high and be able to have, have that strength as they move on.
Well, good. Well, good. I mean, you know, it's just, it's a building. It's a process, if, you know, and, you know, and there could be multiple reasons that impacted. So hopefully, it'll have, you know, positive results after.
When I can, I can still remember us coming last year and showing you, you know, the increases. And then to see that, you know, even some of our 2024 data has changed because they have changed the parameters. One of the data points changed by thirty points into the negative. And so, seeing that was also disappointing. Obviously, they wanted to look at the data and make sure that it's a level, a level field for all Illinois districts. And so, we're going to continue to keep having those conversations. We have plans with our eight individuals that are really committed to making sure that we improve.
Well, it's good you have at least eight on the group. But you're right, you know, the last two years have been, you know, very positive in it. So it's what happened, and how can you move forward from there? So, and build on it. So, good luck with it.
Thank you. And lastly, tonight, we're going to talk about our areas of focus for 2025, 2026.
So when we look at our areas of focus, we, we're going to look at layering on in our ELA to our grade K and one in our reading curriculum. So we have been focused on our foundational reading skills with magnetic reading. And now, we're going to layer on that comprehension and that writing work. So we have implemented bookworms across K-1, and we have started the training for that this fall. We have also, like we've already mentioned, we are going to strengthen our foundational reading skills in grade two as well. So grade two is one of those years where we do expect them to start being able to read longer chapter books, longer pieces of text. But we have a lot of kids who still just need that extra little boost of that phonics instruction. And so, from our MTSS data, we did learn, you know, that we could incorporate and embed a couple of days a week of some very structured, explicit phonics, just like we were doing in K-1. So we're layering that this year into grade two. And grade two teachers are very excited about that, and they have some unique ways that they are going to be implementing that in the classroom. Then, we are also looking at improving and increasing our student writing opportunities. I did just mention one when we were talking about the math IR, right? So we still need to write in math. So that is one opportunity with that common framework. But then, we also look at how do we write about what we read across the day? So we write about what we read in reading, but we also write about what we're reading and learning in science and social studies. And we know that we can really build comprehension by having students write about that. The other thing that came across, and I want to share because it was an outcome of our K-5 ELA articulation that we had this fall. With that writing focus, we have really made our writing instruction a lot more rigorous in our kindergarten and our first grade. So our kindergartners, we have a commitment that all of them are going to write a really, really strong sentence. And I know it might sound like, well, you know, don't they write more than that? Yes, but we want it a really, really strong sentence. Then, when they go into first grade, they are writing two or three sentences using conjunctions and adding details. And then, so that way, by the time they get to second grade, they're really, really focused on a strong paragraph. And that will help when they go to fourth and fifth, and they're having to write long responses on an IR as well as in their My View curriculum. So that improving student writing is just so foundational. And we really feel like having some benchmarks set and having that conversation across K-5 has been, has been really impactful. So we're very excited about that area of focus. And then, lastly, to kind of build on the five essentials, we're really looking for ways for, to increase our student-led conversation. So how do we increase engagement? How do we increase motivation to talk about text? To have students collaborating about what they read, about what they write? And our My View curriculum has some of that. But how do we enhance and increase those opportunities? So those are different instructional routines and activities that teachers can have students engaged in just to allow them to talk more, to talk collaboratively about, about what they are learning. One example, I watched a teacher the other day, and it was called a stray activity where they were all sharing some different strategies in a group. And then, when they rotated, one person stayed back, and then the next group came, and that person then had to facilitate and explain what the group did. And so, it was just a unique way to kind of organize the group and have them share and then, and then report out. And then, the teacher could go around and facilitate and listen. So those are the types of, you know, cooperative learning, engagement routines that all of the teachers are incorporating and embedding into all of the subject areas across their day.
I had to smile on the really, really strong sentence. I don't know if any other board members keep their children's papers, but I've gone through some of mine recently, and there were no strong sentences in kindergarten.
Well, our kindergartners will all have them, so.
So our last three areas of focus, again, we're going to ensure that our MTSS process that we do three times a year is proactive and consistent with our academic progress, which we discussed a little bit tonight about what we're doing with our MTSS process. And we have strong psychologists that also lead that process and really support what we need to make sure that we are stretching those students that are in the accelerated learning, but also supporting our students with special needs. And then, developing that social, emotional capacity. I think it's amazing Kristin has done a great job in really even how we deal with discipline and how we encompass, you know, what were those big feelings? How do they talk through that? And it's just a constant of trying to get students to understand where they are socially, emotionally, so that they can go back to the classroom and learn. And then, lastly, is again, engaging in that building climate and what can we do to change? I think the biggest thing is, we heard through the five essentials, but now, what do we do? And really making sure that we come back next year and say, this is what we shared with you, and this is what we did, and we're seeing that increase. And so, really making that commitment and making sure that these areas of focus are focused on throughout the rest of the year. And then, lastly, we just want to thank, again, our Board of Education and our district leadership for the support and the continuous help throughout the year. And we welcome you at any time to Lyle Elementary School. We have amazing things going on, and we hope you can experience them.
I did have one more question on slide thirty-five. It's the math, I read math. I think these slides, thirty-four and thirty-five were probably the.
Oh, the additional resources.
The additional resources, yeah. We see I read math. I think these are, these are amazing. I think this kind of shown a picture of all the incredible work that the staff at LES has been doing. I had to look at this a few times. I couldn't believe the numbers and the shrinkage of yellow and red, right? And so, but when I looked at one, I looked at the fifty-eight students that, you know, in second grade fall. But where were they in first grade in spring? Because it kind of shows part of the story. You had fifty-eight that come in there at one level below. Of those fifty-eight, how many were two levels below? Were you one level below at the end of that year? Which is all a continuum. I mean, there's a lot of hard, I mean, first of all, these numbers are great, but I'm curious about that. You know, there's some summer slump that goes into that, that fall score, so. But that doesn't answer how much this all reduced. So it must be from the prior grade that the students are leaving that prior grade better prepared, is by assumption.
Right. So I think if I got your question right. So, yes, so in the fall, that's why, you know, why I say we're really celebrating our fall data because you want as many kids as you can ready for that grade level instruction. Now, this is an adapted test, which means, right? Like where they are at the beginning of the year, you expect them to grow. So on a fall score, you can be one grade level below on an I ready in the fall, and they'll say, you are ready to go. You, because you haven't had any grade level instruction yet. But of course, by mid-year, you can't be one grade level below. You need to now be in that green zone. So it's a little misleading, right? Because it's going to shift and it's, and it's going to move a little bit. But yes, you know, what, what we highlight here is when you really look at those kids in the red, right, from the fall. You really want those kids, you know, in those red areas in the fall. You want to reduce that as much as you can and having those kids, like I was saying, move up through, through those levels.
So great. Thank you for that insight. I think I understand that a little bit better now.
Yeah.
If I could just ask one question, too, and this was in the school improvement plan, but in talking about the evaluations for teachers. And you referenced Talent Ed. What, what is that?
Yes, so Talent Ed is actually our evaluation process. And each individual teacher has certain criteria that they have to go through. So a non-tenure, I'll give you an example of a non-tenured teacher. They have a minimum of two evaluations. So those are formal evaluations that are done throughout the year. And they, it's one of us as the evaluator. And they go into Talent Ed, and Talent Ed will have their pre-conference. So they're basically sharing with us their lesson plan of what they're doing for that lesson. And then, we meet with them in a pre-conference, and we talk about, okay, what am I going to see in your classroom? What are you looking for students to learn? Some of the questions I ask is, you know, is there something that you're focusing professionally that you want to grow this year? And what are some of those things that we can incorporate throughout this evaluation process? Some of the goals that they might have. And then, we do the evaluation. We share the information. We basically type everything that they say through their evaluation. And then, we send it to them before our reflection, which is our post-conference. And then, at the post-conference, we discuss, you know, what we saw, what their thoughts were. And then, we write their evaluation up. So there's three different things in Talent Ed. It's their pre-conference, their evaluation, and their post-conference. And then, they can also do a self-reflection. It's optional within our union contract, but they can do a post-reflection that says, this is what I thought the lesson went and how I think I could do better. Or maybe it went amazing, and my student engagement was beyond that, what I anticipated. And then, they also will put in their student growth. That's part of their evaluation process, and they're looking at their data. Many non-tenured teachers are looking at their Bridges Unit Two. They look at that math unit two to see how our students are progressing. So they do a pre-test and a post-test, and then they put that data into Talent Ed. And then, we also will do that again for another evaluation. And then, we will do a summative evaluation. So our non-tenured staff might have six to seven processes in Talent Ed. And then, they submit that before March first because all our non-tenured teachers need to know by March first whether they're being retained for the following year. And then, our tenured staff, they go through a three-year cycle. And so, our first year, we do informal evaluation. And then, second year, we do a formal, and then, third year, summative. And then, we also do a student growth for them as well. So that's all in the Talent Ed.
Okay, and so Talent Ed is more of the program itself? And it still follows the Danielson model?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks. I just hadn't heard that term, so I appreciate it then. I also just wanted to give kudos for adding the three sections of accelerated math. Are there accelerated English systems in place?
So currently, we have accelerated ELA for reading in grades four and five. We are, next year, planning on adding that at the third grade level as well so that those will look the same. So math and ELA will begin in third grade. So we'll identify in the spring of second grade. But again, we'll have multiple opportunities for students to access that program throughout third, fourth, and fifth.
Great, thanks. That was one of the Vision 202 things, too. And the other one was about the co-curriculars. Are there, if there are any plans for that in the, maybe not this year, but.
We, we actually, myself, Dr. Flippig, and Mr. Markey, we went this summer to Lyle Park District and talked to them what opportunities they could provide for us. And so, we have in the works of doing a survey to parents and then, seeing what they're looking for, and then also, obviously, providing staff. We also have some of our staff at the elementary level that are looking at some other opportunities as well. And so, we're hoping that by spring, we'll have something definitely implemented at the elementary school.
Good, good. And maybe even, is there anything with the Park District? Is that another partner in that besides the library?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Excellent, okay. Thank you. Those were, those are my questions. I'm sorry. Anybody?
You know, Pam, I just had a thought. If they are looking at things like different sports and stuff for some of these co-curriculars, there's so many of our high school students that play those sports that need service hours for things. I just thought it might be a nice opportunity, and then they could get to know some kids at the high school, and really good.
One of the things that the high school did was the cheer. They had the little lions come out, and it was amazing. I heard even from our staff members that signed up their children, and they went to the cheer, and they got a T-shirt and a bow, and they just felt so special because they were part of the cheerleaders. And so, we're hoping that we can incorporate a little bit more of that. We also have some of our high school students that are helping out with our Lyle, our HSO, Lyle Elementary Home and School. And they were at the candy bar bingo doing some hours, which is pretty amazing. And so, I think the LHSO is now realizing that they need to reach out to the high school more often to get some of those students to provide some of those opportunities to help.
The little lioness could not have been cuter at the football team, so. It worked. What you were doing was work, so. Does anybody else have any?
I just, thank you for that presentation. It was really clear and comprehensive. And I just really appreciate that you name what you're working on, and you have a really clear and systematic plan to get there, and then, really awesome results for our students' learning. So thank you for all that you do every day for our kids.
Yes, thank, thank you very much. It was an excellent presentation, so. Appreciate it very much. Okay. We will go on to item eight B, which is the Freedom of Information requests. Those are in the packet. Any questions from those? And eight C, public comment follow-up. There was none, no public comment last month. Eight D is the superintendent's report.
All right. I was hoping to have a little bit more time to put up my computer, but I'll go off of memory. Some of the exciting things beyond what you saw tonight at Lyle Elementary is Stacy Weeks, our head of our library there, does an incredible job having authors come out. And so, she had an author come out, not only to read to the students some of the books that she's written, but more importantly, talk about what does it mean to be an author? Where does she get her inspiration? Like, anyone can be an author, so where do you start? And so, I thought the author did a really, really good job explaining all of that. At the elementary, they had also mentioned just the value in those MTSS meetings. I know Lyle Elementary has gotten to be rather big, but they've got an incredible team that comes together. And Mr. Markey's had a chance to sit in on some of those. I've had a chance to sit in on a lot of those. And they really have individual conversations about each and every student, not only where they've been, but what kind of progress they've made. And our hope is in time, as you saw that triangle, that we'll have more and more students and that little at the top to me further down and maybe not need as much support. But they are talking about individual students. They look at some data with that, and then they try and determine, like, what does that, that student need beyond what we're already doing? And so, it's been really powerful conversations. At the junior high level, they talked a little bit about some of the exciting things they're doing in their science program. I think it's one of those great courses that I think the kids get excited about because of all the hands-on. And so, they've spent some time focusing on light recently and understanding what light is, what it isn't, and how relative it is based on our eyes and what we can and can't see. In addition to that, I think this is our third year across country. For those of you who have students, I feel like this is their year. And it's one of those that I think when Mr. Carney and the team looked and along with the staff, what can we add? What is that thing that maybe kids can participate if they're, they're not finding a sport they connect with? And it has been so powerful. I think that the coaches have done a phenomenal job, not only showing the importance of cross-country, but also being part of a team. And some of the things they do is cheering on the other students as they cross the finish line. And so, we were fortunate to have, I think, three students here make it to state. And so, was it state or was it regional? State.[1785.33] And so we had a big send-off for them and I think they were very, very successful. And then at the high school, as much as we are not really excited about taking a test, I think being able to visualize those tests, having the students be able to take the pre-ACT, the PSAT, the more and more you practice, they can really get some feedback. And so Eric will talk a little bit during the presentation as to reutilizing a new system now that gives you some really good feedback early on, right after you take the test as to where you did well. And if you weren't doing well, what can you do in order the next time you take it to be able to do better? And so, you know, we're really excited to have that support and get students by the time they actually take the real ACT to get into college, let's say. As one of the measures, I should say. They're, they're very familiar where their strengths are and hopefully been able to, to navigate the test and focus on those areas that maybe they were struggling with in their freshman sophomore year. And then the high school also wanted us to highlight that there's just always a season of sports and fine arts. And so I think we're gearing up to the next season. And so a lot of exciting time. We had the homecoming since the last time we had our board meeting. And so as much as we have a varsity level, I think it felt as good, if not better than even, you know, when we didn't have to make that transition in terms of getting able to cheerleaders and the band and the students and the pep rallies and all of that. That really makes it a special time of year for everybody. And then at the district level, we just want to talk about that the parents have been really involved in their students. And this is that time of year where they have the parent-teacher conference. And so we're able to give that feedback to them as to what's working, where we can get the, the partnership with the parents. And because I think each and every one of us wants the students to do well. And when the parents are actively involved in having those conversations with the teacher, hopefully not for the first time, that partnership goes a long way during the 12 years that, sometimes 13 years that are students with us. So we're in a really good place. As you saw tonight, you've had two of the three presentations and we're looking forward to having the high school give their presentation in the month of November.
As you developed on the success of the junior varsity football team, they had a 7-2 season, which is, I mean, it's amazing. And a lot of hard work. Thank you to the staff for all the hard work that keeping that program going. And we had a great outcome this year.
Yeah, I think we were much more excited to have similar level students play against us. And so as much as we hope to continue to build that, so we have the varsity level again, right sizing it for this year really was, I think, the right choice.
Yes.
Definitely. The games are well attended and I think they felt a lot of support. You did an excellent job from memory because you covered everything there. I just want to also add, you know, kudos for the cross-country team. And having that feeder program makes a big difference. Our, you know, the, at the high school they're going into, I think, I always get them mixed up, but I think they're in regionals at this point. So it's, it's a great program for it. I just wanted to add one more thing, and that was kudos to the, to the students who participated yesterday in the trunk-or-treating at the high school. A lot of the sports teams, the kids, the theme was fast food restaurants and they decorated their tongs and, and they were decorated. Paula and I were there. We did not take any candy away from the kids, but you had your family there and I think they all had a great time. It was very well attended and beautiful weather for it. So it was, it's, it's a really, a neat new tradition for the, that benefits the community. So glad to see that.
Well, definitely pass that along. And then Thanksgiving, not Thanksgiving, Halloween is on a Friday this year, right?
Yeah.
So like, we should make that similar to some of the ones that always fall on a Thursday. Have Halloween always be the, whatever Fri, that last Friday, Halloween, because if you have a chance to come over and see the parade, that is a very exciting time. And I, we have so many parents come in to be able to participate in the games and the things that happen in the classroom. But it's a, an exciting, exciting time for, I think, all the elementary students in particular. Always better when it falls on a Friday.
For the adults too.
Some would say.
Well, thank you. Excellent report. So nine is our committee reports. Nine A, facility master planning did not meet. Nine B, finance?
Finance met at 6:45 in this very room where we discussed the facilities and the financial updates.
And nine C, policy did not meet. Nine D, Vision 202 did not meet. Item 10, which is our board representative reports, home and school. Heather and I attended and the meeting notes are in file if anybody had any questions. ISB delegate to board, did you have anything to?
We met earlier and we have adopted all the, all the resolution and the constitution amendments. We'll have a couple of questions going out to ISB for clarification. Also reminder, Wednesday is the division meeting at the Carlisle. And, and it's also, you know, if you can't make that, there's the Lyle Bennett jazz concert that night. So unfortunate, unfortunate conflict. Also a reminder for the conference in November downtown, the triple I on November 21st, 23rd.
Okay, great. I think Wednesday's is at 6:00 PM at the Carlisle and Lombard. And I'll send out something. There's five of us going and maybe we can consider carpooling. So it's The Art of School Boarding is the presentation, or the author from the, of The Art of School Boarding, Jim Burgett. All right. I think those are the main things for intergovernmental. Oh, there was, I'm sorry, there is one other thing. I got a letter in the mail about a survey for IAS, IASB. And I don't think everybody got it. But it says, scan the, scan the code and you can get onto the survey. So I will forward it out to everybody. I'll pull up the survey and then send it out and we can all respond. It's just about some things that they would like to assess as they're working on a strategic plan of what would be benefit for, beneficial for school boards from the ISB services. So I'll get that out to you. Let's see, intergovernmental met. Keith and I attended that last week. The notes are in.
Mr. Markie was able to join us too. He's been able to go to the last two.
Oh, I'm so sorry. He was, yes.
He has commented just how special it is to be able to have Lisle come together and all of our, our units to be able to, A, see how we can support each other, but really have those conversations of what's happening so that we're all on the same page. And so has been helpful to eliminate the rumor mill, but also great in terms of a sounding board to see how we can actually leverage our partnerships to be able to save, serve the same community.
No, he gave a great overview of a lot of things going on in the district. So I apologize. Yes, you're sitting right next to me. And intergovernmental, I'm sorry, not Len met. And that was the two of us. I don't think Jason was on that call if I don't remember. But, and those notes are in file also. Lisle Education Foundation, the minutes are in file from there too. And included in there is the, the grant that was approved. SACIT did not meet. Item, which brings us to item 11. Does anyone have any agenda topics for future board meetings? Okay. Then we'll move to item 12. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, performance, discipline, compensation, or dismissal of employees. Could I have a motion?
So both.
Thank you.
Second.
I think Paula got it out first there. Okay. And then, yes. And then if we could have a roll call, please.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. DiDomenico.
Aye.
Mr. Helderly.
Aye.
Mr. Naglitzon, aye. Ms. Nova Cell?
Aye.
And Ms. Allman.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We will adjourn to closed session at 9:07 PM.